Yeah, rants are amazing. So is that like a second reading? Which is still, it'd be like a second reading, right?
Which ordinance?
The, the, where we're bringing it into line with the federal language. Sure, and I printed, I got an email when we were trying to figure out, there's no paper, but there's an email.
Oh, yeah, I got the paper today.
Right.
Okay. The kid that want to pull the surprise. As not kind, yeah.
Him taught her how.
Well, I don't know, I can't take, but she was one of my debate kids, so. But I can't, I'm pretty sure that her professors at U of M and some other places might have had something to do with it too. And she's just brilliant and hardworking.
Must be.
She is. All right. I am going to call the regular meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council to order at seven o'clock on May 12th, 2022. I would greatly appreciate it if those of you who would like would rise and see the pledge. I'm gonna call the role, Ms. Atchison has messaged me before the meeting and told me that she was going to not be able to attend tonight. Mr. Gross.
Here.
Ms. Hamel said she is unable to attend.
Right.
Ms. Nixon, I have not heard from Ms. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Race.
Here.
And Mayor Conley is here. At this time, I would entertain a motion to excuse Ms. Powell, or Ms. Powell, Ms. Powell's here, Ms. Atchison, Ms. Hamel, and Ms. Nixon.
Make a motion to excuse those three counselors.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Moving on to public comments. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like us to respond to you in a capacity that involves writing. You're not required to say your address into our Zoom YouTube world. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at this time?
Good evening, my name is Kami Howe, I am here. I am the director of your local public library. And I'd just like to give you a little bit of detail about what was happening during the month of April and invite everyone to the birthday party tomorrow. The new building is actually turning five tomorrow, believe it or not, so we'll be celebrating that all day. So for the month of April, from for kiddos zero to five, at storytime, there were 198 kids and 125 adults. The spring bingo reading, there are 25 participants. For six-year-olds to 11-year-olds, there are 34 signed up for spring bingo. For teens and tweens, there are five signed up. CTA visits, there were 202 students and 13 adults that came to the library. For families, there was a seed starting workshop that had 18 participants. The library hosted an Easter celebration that had 375 attendees. The library took a take and make craft to the community extravaganza and gave away over 645. There was a reader's theater and there were 12 cast members and 10 audience members. There was a craft show and petting zoo with 381 in attendance. For adults, there was a spring into wellness program and there were 12 participants. 16 signed up for spring reading bingo. Eight attended the book club, 27 blood donors, 41 for Stitch and Chat, and seven at the writers groups. For 55 and over, there were eight participants at the coffee and canvas, three for the fitness classes, and two for game day.
Thank you, please let the record show that Mayor Pro Tem Ms. Nixon arrived at 7:05.
Apologies and evaluation.
Hey, I you're a hospice nurse.
Hello, my name's James Corvall. You discussed the land that I had on White Creek. And I would just like it to, I know at a later date or whatever, to reconsider it. And Mike has said that if I can't purchase the land, maybe I am able to get permission to be on it as long as I don't build anything on it or whatever. Oh, I'm just here because I don't think you realize exactly what this land is. I own up to here. This is the land that's in question. I always thought I owned it, really, truly. And I thought you guys had an easement across here. Whatever, and it brought my attention because I had vehicles here that were parked and I had to remove them, which I did. And but I don't, I don't think you understand that this is a creek that flows through here. And it has, the pictures will show you the creek. And this is a path that goes across it right here. And it's only about six foot wide or whatever, it's not able to take a vehicle across it or whatever. This, this part of the land, the city come in and they dug it out, it's like eight foot lower. It's all swamp and it has a pond that they put in here. The pipe comes in from this way and it comes from the water treatment plant that was built in kind of wetland, so they needed to get rid of the water. So they brought it down to here. And then there's another one that comes here that from the parking lots of the other buildings up that way from the factories and stuff. But this path is only, it's about 600 feet long and 91 feet wide is all this is here. This is swamp, so I don't believe that you could do any building here or whatever. And to get to this property, to use that for the city's use or whatever, you would have to build a bridge across here to get access to it, because this over here is owned by Compass Coach. So.
Want to go up there and talk?
The reason why he knows so much about this, he's lived there all his life. He's always watched everything that's happened in there.
Happened and whatever, yeah, because that was my folk farm before the lagoons were put back there and all this other stuff was done or whatever. But I, I would just want somebody, I, I can't afford right now to buy this from you. Oh, I would like permission to be on it, this part here. Is all that I'm asking. Consider that right now, and then maybe at a later date when, you know how the the gas prices and everything, I don't have the money right now to purchase that. Mike wanted a survey done on this, but I couldn't get a surveyor there right now, he's like a month away.
Okay.
But that's all, all that I'm asked is that you kind of reconsider and maybe somebody still sees that you can develop this part at all or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great picture.
The speech teacher says good visual aids.
Hi, my name is Gage Selvius, the address for my firm is 333 Bridge Street Northwest in Grand Rapids. I'm an attorney with Varnum LLP and I'm here to follow up on a letter that was sent to the council this Monday. Varnum represents owners of several multifamily properties in Cedar Springs, I believe a lot of them are here tonight. And these multifamily dwellings were built in compliance with the zoning ordinance at the time back in the 1960s, 1950s, many years ago. And since they've been built, the zoning ordinance changed and these multifamily dwellings are now in single-use zoning areas. These properties have been maintained, inspected, approved, they've been taxed. It's, it's been very clear that they've been openly operated as multifamily dwellings and the city has known that they are legal, non-conforming properties for decades. However, recently our clients received a letter from the code enforcer for the city. And that was in January of this year. And that letter stated that if the owners sell their interests in their properties, any subsequent owner is expected to cease the non-conforming use and basically bring it back into a single-use property. So this is an unconstitutional taking, it's, there's really no legal basis for this letter, the, the positions stated in this letter, under the Cedar Springs zoning ordinance, which that states that any lawful non-conforming use existing at the time of the passage of an ordinance may be continued. These all, all these buildings were in existence at the time the zoning ordinance was passed. Michigan law as well, MCL 125.3208 states that if the use of a dwelling, building, structure, or land is lawful at the time of enactment of a zoning ordinance, then that use may be continued although it does not conform to the new zoning ordinance. And there's also established case law authority.
One minute?
That non-conforming use runs with land after a sale, so that it's well-established law that there is no basis constitutionally for what a monster we're taking here because they, obviously this condition impairs the vendability of the land and reduces the value that they hold in their land. So basically, we wanted to show up today, we did not receive a response to our letter yet. This has been going on for months, we have not gotten adequate action from the city on what we believe and we just want to push you for, for some further action on this matter to see if we can resolve it. Our, our clients are open to conversations regarding how we can settle this and how we can make sure that this is taken care of, but if we continue to get no action, we're going to be forced to pursue legal remedies in order to protect our constitutional interests. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Christopher Conflitty and my address in town here is 67 East Beach is a multifamily, one that was just referenced. So may I ask, why is this on the agenda today to discuss or resolve this multifamily issue? We've been discussing in city council.
I think we've pulled it, am I correct?
I never put on the agenda, no.
Okay, because we had talked about putting it on and then when we received legal.
Litigation.
Yeah, we decided we probably need to stop trying to come up with a system for this because we all seem to feel this is what you're gonna do.
We just want to, we just want to I feel, I don't understand how we, we are not getting towards the same page or at least getting our point across, but okay, so part of what I want to say is, one side note is, is, is my daughter's 12th birthday today. So instead of being with my daughter on her birthday, I feel that I, I'm, I have to come here because I feel that there's people in the city that are in the position of power that are not using their power for the people, they're using their power against the people and I, I just.
People who live here?
The, the properties, the multifamily properties that we're talking about.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
So I unfortunately missed last month's meeting, so perhaps I missed a development. But it was my understanding that we were actively trying to come up with a solution for you. And trying to figure out how we were going to do this. Now, I will agree that government moves very slowly. That's true and it's frustrating and it's been frustrating for, I think, everyone at some point. But in the meantime, my understanding was not, we were not attempting to penalize you and we were trying, I thought, to, to come up with a solution that would grandfather you in. So I'm, I'm a little surprised at the involvement of legal counsel as well.
We've been, we've been hopeful for, for that resolution as well, but it has not happened. And then I have the unique problem of having the, my fire damaged home, that I'm trying to get, I want to get repaired. So I have applied to, to City Hall with a, with a building permit to do the repairs. City manager has said he will not entertain my permit until the, the zoning issues is, is resolved and as well as I have a 60%.
Not exactly what he told you.
Do you, do you want to clarify for me?
Aren't we waiting on an insurance statement?
No. I don't believe so, he's asked for proof because I have to satisfy a 60% threshold. If my damages are more than 60%, then I'm not allowed to rebuild and, and that's clear. So if it's less than 60%, then I am allowed to repair as is, as a multifamily dwelling. So I have provided proof of that from licensed builders, from fire restoration companies that have been in there. I'm also a licensed builder, I'm a licensed appraiser, I'm a licensed real estate broker, I work on properties for a living. So I'm, I'm saying, and as well as other people in writing that have been provided, have stated that same thing, that the threshold is, is met, it's less than the 60% damage, I want to be able to proceed. I also have a ticking clock, I have 120 days clock where the city is, has some withholding money. Over $13,000, almost $14,000. So the, the property, it, that's in an ordinance that it, it needs to be demolished or repaired or the, or be, the repair process has to begin within that 120 days. So my fire was on January 25th, so I need, I need, I, we, there's not time to wait unless I can get some type of formal extension on this. So I'm asking for council to approve this for me so I can repair the property, get it in good condition for, for everybody.
Who is withholding your money?
City of Cedar Springs.
We have $13,000 of your money?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a formal action taken by his insurance company to ensure that the property is demolished if it's not allowed.
Right. We did not take $13,000 from you and we're not holding $13,000.
Metamere, if I could.
Please.
Obviously, people can get up and tell their version of the story and I'm not really supposed to respond, but the city had never received what I would consider appropriate evidence for the value of the property. Until in the last couple of weeks, I got frustrated at the lack of evidence. So the city went out and hired a professional appraiser to give us a value of the property. I received that report, I think, a day ago. I have simply not done the math. I could go back to my office and do it right this minute if we want to hold the meeting, you know, for a few minutes. I just haven't had the time. I can come in tomorrow on my day off and do it. If council would like, I'll be here anyways, I probably would get around to doing it. But, you know, this is a lot of, I have words for it, but it was a lack of action by the applicant, not the city.
That's, that's not true, you, first you asked for a fire investigation report, provided that. You asked, you asked for, to get me, get other proof, I provided you from, for, from licensed builders that, that specialize in that area. And you said that's not acceptable to you and you, 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 you did clearly say you are, you are the one that will make the decision until you are satisfied, nothing will get approved. So I don't know what else I can do, it seems the goalpost keeps, keeps moving and I want to repair the property.
Why don't you give us your insurance statement?
What, what is, what is an insurance statement?
It's saying what the property value is and what, this, they're the ones withholding the money.
No, that's not correct, the, the city of Cedar Springs is withholding the money. The city, city has that money.
The mayor is correct however, that no insurance report which would have indicated or should have indicated the value was ever provided to the city, which would have hurried this along so the city wouldn't have had to hire an appraiser to get the value. I, I have the value, it's in my office, I'll be happy to do it as soon as I possibly can, but it was not the city's fault.
And honestly, you're over four minutes.
Good, thank you.
Anne Spitzbergen. I was here last month. I saw the meeting the month before, I saw the meeting the month before. At one point in time, this issue with non-conforming properties was on the agenda. It was to be discussed and it was taken off the agenda by the person in control of the agenda. And so it has not been on the agenda since. We have been diligently trying to encourage you to take action. There has been no meetings that we are aware of, there has been no public information made available to any of us. This is not a case of us trying to take the city to court or anything like that. We simply want you to please make a decision. This has been going on since January, now four months, five months, I think it is now. It should be time enough to form an opinion on your part. Please. We have been forced into the corner, we started by the code that you said has to be followed by attempting to work it out with the city manager, we were not able to work it out with the city manager. We went to the mayor, the mayor told us as business people in town that we do not, she doesn't have to listen to us, we're just business people in town. We are not voters in town. So since we are not business, we are not voters, we are not her constituents, we can't talk to the mayor.
You can talk to me.
Now we are addressing you. Please, please take action on this, this has been way too long, thank you.
Hi, Derek Ladishkin. I own 64 East Maple. And I guess I'm a little confused by the surprise that we are looking to bring this to litigation. The city manager himself said a couple of meetings ago, actually three months ago, that he's ready to take this to litigation. And since then, it hasn't been on the agenda and we haven't heard anything from the council regarding this issue. So what are we supposed to do? He told us he's going to take it to litigation, that they're ready to take it to. Can you blame us? I have multiple units that are coming up for leases, this has been six months now, we can't renew a lease. We have people, we have empty apartments that people can't move into because we can't get it inspected, because we can't get a city rental form on our property because of this. It is extremely frustrating, it has been a rental property for 60 years in the city. 60 years. And now this moment is the moment, for whatever reason, I mean, I don't understand what positive outcome can possibly happen through this process. Like it's treating these landlords in this district completely different than all the other landlords, saying that we don't keep stuff up to code when our properties have been expect, inspected routinely. Our property was inspected in May, but we have to get another one because it was sold and we don't even know what's going on because technically they want us to convert it to a multifamily. So we are completely in limbo on our property. That's why we're at this point where we're at. Not because of this, I've contacted the city manager months ago, he never returned a phone call. Come to a meeting, he says he's willing to take it to litigation. What are we supposed to do at this point? Thank you.
So, and maybe just for clarification for Ms. Nixon, at last month's meeting, it was not on the agenda. And Ms. Hamel specifically asked Mr. Womack why it wasn't on the agenda, and I'm sure it's all on the video, his response was he was very, very busy. She then asked him, will it be on next month's agenda? And his response was he didn't know, he was very busy. When the agenda came out on Monday, it was not on the agenda again this month. So at that point, as you've heard, we just had to do something, we have no idea when or if it will ever be. But I, I was on the same page as you, I thought several months ago the council was pretty much united and moving in a, in a direction, but something has completely stopped and there's been no communication whatsoever. And just from sitting in the audience last time, it was, it was kind of hard to hear about numerous meetings with both the manager and the mayor, from this gentleman that's putting in this big development, this big rich guy. I don't even know what state he lives in. But us, who live here, who work here, who play here, who donate to all of the nonprofit organizations. I don't know if that developer will ever step foot in Cedar Springs again after his big development is gone and up. But we do, and I feel like we're just being pushed aside and nobody has time for us. I am, all of us, none of us like could taking anybody to court, that is the last thing any of us want to do, we love our city. This is where our home is, this is where we work and play, our kids go to school. That is the last thing, but what would you do if you were us? Tell me, tell me what to do. I don't know what else to do.
Anybody else? I, we all pay taxes.
Just a thought. Last two meetings, the city manager has been very busy, he hasn't been able to address this issue. And I believe the city manager's paid a salary to do his job, isn't he? Okay, that does not take into a quite into account time, he's not a 40-hour-a-week person.
No.
He's paid a salary.
50 to 60 hour.
Well, and if the job takes 70, it takes 70, he's paid to do the job. And he has, by his own admission, not been able to do the job for at least the last two months. And he did, he actually could even make a request for an assistant manager, okay? Come on.
We're in the process of hiring an assistant manager.
Well, in the meantime, he should be doing his job, thank you.
Mayor.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Manager?
I actually have a solution ready to go. And I was ready to comment and.
I understand, we've been working on this solution and then all of a sudden, people are getting threats of being sued.
So I have a solution ready to go when we are threatened with litigation. And since that time, I've been speaking with the city attorney instead of the landlords. It's my intention to speak with their attorney as early as tomorrow to hopefully resolve this issue. But as Ms. Nixon indicated, government is slow, there's lots of layers we have to go through. And frankly, I am. Uh, and frankly, I am an extremely busy person. So I had been working on the issue. It's very complicated. Um, and I understand the pent up anger and the frustration. Uh, not everything that was stated here today is true. As you know, because.
I do.
On a regular basis, but I hope to have this issue resolved by.
We've had three meetings, four meetings in the last week, you and I.
Yep.
About this. And then additional ones with the planning commission chair.
I'm taking off the agenda.
Because lots of people got threatening letters in the mail.
Well, it wasn't on the agenda as of Monday.
They, they got the letters before that.
They got the letters on Monday. Monday, Monday, it is dated Monday. Please reference the date. The agendas are supposed to be out Thursday before, but. That's on Monday. It wasn't on the agenda unless you get a different agenda than Monday. Monday's agenda, right here, it is not on this agenda.
Miss Wolf actually got the letter today.
The emails went out.
Wasn't addressed to me.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Gross.
I believe we've discussed long enough.
I agree.
We are prohibited from discussing.
Mm-hmm.
Based on public hearing, I think has gone. Too far this evening. All I can tell you is that. There was a statement presented two months ago by. Uh, Councilor Powell that was probably supportive of you and I, it's just. As we can't discuss it much now. We may sit here and be mute. It's not because we're not caring. Okay, I just want you folks to understand that. Uh, we're bound by certain things that we have to follow. Okay?
Any other public comment? Moving on. Public hearing. The twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three budget.
Madam Mayor, I apologize. The finance director had a conference today.
Sure.
In Traverse City and I felt considering how, what a good condition the budget was in. That we would have let her go to the conference, not force her to be here.
Absolutely.
Hopefully, um.
This is a third reading of the budget?
Ask them that way.
Oh, they, you may, you may have them all.
This is the third reading of the budget and I don't know that we, thank you. I appreciated your poster.
Very good.
Very nice.
I like pictures.
Madam Mayor, if I could address that issue real quick. So I did have a meeting with them.
Right.
Intention to present irrevocable license exactly like.
Yeah, the difficulty is with the selling. It's more that they can't buy it because it makes the property an illegal size and shape.
They moved everything off the property.
According to state law of what your property, it can't be more wide than it is.
As far as expansion and there's a four to one ratio.
Yeah.
In the last day or two, they've removed everything off the property and I'm now willing to.
Yeah, that's, it's all good. All right. Um, adoption of the budget.
Madam Mayor, we still have to hold the public hearing.
Right, we're on the public hearing. We need to hold a public hearing. So do I, I need to go? We have to have a motion for the public hearing?
Open on your own authority.
Can I? Okay, we are opening a public hearing on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. This is the third reading of the budget. I don't think there's been a lot of changes from time two to time three.
I don't think there's been any changes since the last time you guys saw it.
I think we've made a few changes after the first one.
You have to the first and then a one or two after the second, but since the last time you've seen it.
Any questions for anyone?
Not at this time for me.
Anyone else? Any public comment? Cause it's a public hearing. Any public comment on the budget? It's online. And it lives online. We don't take it down. And it's. You can request a paper copy, I believe. There's a procedure, but it's. Okay, any other comment? Then do I need to close the hearing? Can I just close the hearing or do we need to? Okay, we're going to close the hearing. And then we will be voting on the budget later. So moving on to the adoption of the agenda. And we needed to add. The agenda, the piece on the. Um, the pocket park.
Madam Mayor, I would offer an action item. Action item. Uh, E, which would be a motion to approve of the letter of support for the downtown pocket park.
And this is so that we can get, uh, we're attempting to get a grant. And I will be at the DDA meeting on the six. Monday, the sixteenth. I'm actually, I'm taking a personal day to be able to make that happen. Yes.
Madam Mayor, I have a second uh, offer. So, uh, in between the time that this packet was put together, uh, we held a planning commission meeting.
Yes.
Planning commission offered a modification to. Uh, the amendment of chapter thirty-two, article eight.
Right, there was a line they wanted to change.
They wanted to add, uh, I've given you a paper copy of this.
Right.
That there shall be a continuous five foot wide ADA compliant sidewalk that connects an off-site vehicle parking area to the place of worship. So that is the modified amendment. That be substituted for seven B, it looks like. Seven B.
Right here.
Madam Claire, is it okay to substitute instead of?
Um, I wouldn't substitute it. I think you should keep it there. Um, when they make the motion, they can just make with the amended language.
So the, we should say.
So the motion as is with modification stated. If you want to read that statement, you can read it. And noted as an agenda change.
And I trust the planning commission has there. Cause they're the ones who specifically asked that we change the language. Okay. Then that's, is that an item F?
Uh, so it sounds like.
Or is it just a change to item?
So, Madam Mayor, it sounds like no, no modification for that part and just when we get to that item.
Okay.
Make a.
I don't need to make it as a separate. Got it. Then any other changes? And I will take anything. Do you want anything taken off the consent agenda?
No, it looks pretty good to me.
Okay, you're our, I just, you're not, you're not bad. You're not bad. You're our barometer for the, if there's something we missed. You're good at that.
Yes, I like the.
Um. I appreciate it. So at this time then, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of item E. And the action items of the pocket park application for the grant. You made the motion?
I made the motion in my head, so I'm gonna say.
Okay, it sounds good to me.
Thanks, Molly.
I'm gonna do a roll call. Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gross.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, council members may request that any or all items be removed from the consent agenda. A motion is then in order to adopt all items, not remove from the consent agenda. Requesting removal of an item from the consent agenda is a prerogative afforded each council member. And does not require the support of other council members. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? Uh, we'll do a roll call again because there is funding on this. Ms. Powell, any discussion?
Um, I just have a brief discussion. It's just really tough to raise these rates and stuff, but we have to do it.
Yeah.
It's all there is to it.
There was a really powerful piece on NPR talking about how. Small communities all over the state and actually all over the country are struggling. To maintain their water infrastructure, that it's, it's like falling apart and they're having to dramatically raise rates like.
Like two or three times.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous.
Like two hundred percent, three hundred percent to even be able to keep it functioning.
Yes.
So we can be really grateful that we are slightly ahead of the curve on this.
Yes.
So, and I, I heard a whole piece actually about um, rural water grants. And how people, c- communities that are small don't even have really the ability to go apply for them. Which, you know, you have to pay them back the loans, but we did, we did that and so hooray. But yes, it does mean that we do still have to increase water rates. Our, our water infrastructure for the most part in this country has not been touched much. Since it went in the ground at the, during the depression. So that's where we're at. So yeah, it's, yes, nobody likes raising water rates, but. Nobody likes having water we can't drink. So that's where we're at. Okay, so you're absolutely right. I appreciate that. Anybody else? All right, then Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
And Ms. Conley votes yes. Moving on to action items. Motion to approve the twenty twenty-two Cedar Springs Social District Plan. We had a lot of discussion about this at the last one.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two Cedar Springs Social District Plan. Do we need to do item one and two separately or just together?
Um, so they are separate resolutions that imagine the.
Okay. So, uh, the motion to approve of the twenty twenty-two Cedar Springs Social District Plan, item one.
Okay, the motion to approve the resolution approving rec- recommending the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. Consideration approval of certain licenses for social district permits pursuant to public act twenty-four of twenty twenty. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? I know we talked about this a lot at the last one.
And I was glad we talked about it.
I am too. And I, I appreciate everybody's concerns. I'm probably the um. Most lenient on how all of this comes together. Um, but I. I'm not really a drinker and I don't have little kids and I don't, I mean, so. I'm trying to whatever feels like is right for the community, for what they're looking for.
I think we came to a very good conclusion.
Okay, feeling good about it? Anybody have any thoughts or comments? Okay, then roll call. Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
No.
And Ms. Conley votes yes. Moving on to the second resolution. Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash one three. A resolution designating social districts that contain common area in order to allow certain on-premises liquor licenses. Expanded use of shared area for consumption of alcohol pursuant to public act twenty-four of twenty twenty. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that, uh, mo- that resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
I just have a question about the um, area, the common area. Of course, there's like the heart of Cedar Springs and then eventually the downtown park. Now. Can a person get a drink? And walk down the street with it to the area?
Yes, so the, kind of the whole point is that you're able to purchase it at a restaurant and then be able to walk to.
The sidewalk, not down the street. Yeah. I mean, we're, we're trying to.
However, that being said, if there is a community event that occurs in those areas.
Uh-huh.
Um, especially if the road is closed, uh, you could circulate in that area with a drink.
Okay. Other questions? Any other discussion? Okay, I will take a roll call vote. Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
No.
Ms. Conley votes yes. Motion carries. Moving on to action item B, motion to approve ordinance two forty and ordinance to amend chapter thirty-two. Article uh, eight. Need to read my Roman numerals there for a minute. Section thirty-two dash six nine six uses C through E, subpart B. I guess I should be referring to the line change from the planning commission. Um, the code of ordinances for the city of Cedar Springs. The proposed ordinances reduces the required lat size and amends parking requirements for churches, the second reading. And this would be with the modifications as stated by the planning commission.
That would be the end of subpart five.
Which is the um.
There shall be a continuous five foot.
Yes, to, shall, uh, shall place, wait a second. Hold on, let me find it. Not the highlighted part.
The end of subpart five?
I'm trying. It is, all right. Uh, section twenty-four five, remove any person. No, that's still not it. The.
Madam Mayor, are you looking at the right thing? I gave you a lot of paperwork.
You did, but I'm trying. Is it? Oh, I'm on the wrong page. That's my problem.
So it's subpart five, on to that.
Yep, here we go. Or.
There shall be a continuous five foot wide.
The use must not.
Madam Mayor, would you just like me to read it?
There shall be, here we go.
There shall be the very end of five. There shall be a continuous five foot wide ADA compliant sidewalk. That connects an off-site vehicle parking area to the place of worship.
There you go.
That's their sidewalk piece that needed to come in to make it ADA compliant. But then brought the rest of it into compliance with reading.
Yeah, all the zoning problems, yeah.
Right. So awesome. So is that clear, Smud, for everyone? The motion?
We had a discussion about it today, but I'll make, did anybody make the motion yet?
No.
Um, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance. Two four zero and ordinance to amend chapter thirty-two, article eight, section thirty-two. Six nine six uses C through E, subpart B, churches of the code. Of ordinances for the city of Cedar Springs. Yeah, that one died. The proposed ordinance reduces the required lot sizes and amends parking requirements for churches. Second reading.
With the modifications.
With the modifications.
Stated by the planning commission for section five. Thank you.
Madam Claire, are you satisfied with that?
Yes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? And you are our fabulous, um, I just get a report from the chair of the planning commission, but you were there.
I, I talked to uh, Mr. City Manager about what this entailed, five foot sidewalk to off-site parking. And I would suppose with the church, if they were gonna have a wedding or a funeral, otherwise they probably are fitting in there just fine. That they would require extra parking. So if it's a block or two away, they need to go on a sidewalk. And that's what this motion covers.
Madam America, clarified.
Sure, please.
The ordinance doesn't prohibit um, expanded parking like one instance. If there's one wedding, we're not gonna force them to install a sidewalk.
Right.
But if they propose a site plan and their site plan requires off-site parking. Then we would require the installation of a ADA compliant sidewalk.
Right. And it, it, that's mostly about congregant size? Is that my understanding?
Yeah, so places of worship under the current iteration of the parking ordinance, where's one parking space for every three congregants? So if you don't have sufficient parking on site for your congregants, then you'd have to propose off-site.
That's the piece of that. Any other questions?
And our new church has, our proposed new church has what, twenty-four, twenty-five parking spots?
They actually have one or two extra parking spaces on site.
Based on their congregant.
Excellent.
They're sought for the time being.
Yes. Blessing to the neighborhood.
Yes. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay, I will take a roll call vote. Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. Motion carries. Moving on to motion to approve the Patriots Motor Show and Festival Community Event for July second, twenty twenty-two. Subject to final approval for the city manager.
Mr. Jordan White has been patiently waiting with us.
He has. I see him over there. Meaning to the edge of his seat.
So we had a good productive meeting with Mr. White the other day. I got to about half of it, so I was meeting with the backers at that time. Um, but uh, Mr. White sat down with my DPW Director and Sergeant Probst, uh, went over a lot of the details. Um, and at this point, I'd feel comfortable recommending that we approve of his events. Uh, there are some very, very minor issues that we'd still like to hammer out and finalize. Um, so I would ask that you uh, review and approve, subject to final approval by the City Manager. I'm sure Mr. White would like to tell you all about his event.
Okay, yeah. So, uh, since, since the last time that we spoke, um, we wound up narrowing our focus a little bit. So the event is going to be, uh, it's gonna be the Motor Show on Main Street. It's also going to include the bounce houses and dunk tanks, um, as well as the um. One single man performance in the heart of Cedar Springs. Um, there's also, uh, I would like to talk with the uh, City Manager a little bit more about the potential flyover as well. Um, we have used them in the past, and it's uh, from my experience, it wasn't as scary of a thing as what you would initially think it is. They kind of handle it all on their end from the pilots. Um, anyhow, so we wound up kind of coordinating a little bit of a better schedule. So the road closure for Main Street and including um, the uh, throughways on Maple. Would start at ten AM. Registration for the car show would be at eleven. Um, the motor show would formally start at noon, and then the band would start playing at twelve-thirty. And then if we did, were able to pursue a flyover, that would happen at one. So the thought process was, is that we would have all of the vehicles that would be on display for the Motor Show parked in. Static display before spectators would show up to the event, you know, for safety reasons.
Well, similar to what it looked like at Red Flannel this last year. I'm guessing, that's my.
You mean regarding the Motor Show on Main Street? Yeah, and that was kind of our inspiration, I know Mr. White's been working with both Red Flannel and Jason Merlington of the Legion.
Cause I think that worked. I mean, it was, it was a new way of doing it, but I think it worked.
It was really neat.
Yeah.
I really liked that.
Especially with the bridge closed, Main.
Right.
It's substantially cheaper to close Main Street right now. I don't know if this will be able to occur next year, um, but we've already started discussions about potentially doing it on Maple Street.
Let's get through this year and then we can worry about next year, because I got a lot going on this year.
It's the same weekend as um, Sand Lake Festival, right?
Uh, from what I understand, correct, I am unaware, I haven't had an opportunity to connect with them. Um, I, from what I understand, is their. Hmm, uh, car show is going to be um, later on in the evening. I don't know if that's accurate, but I would like to touch base with them and find out if it is on the same day. Or um, if it is on the same day and we're in the afternoon and they're in the evening. Potentially, we could invite them along, and you know, they could carry from Cedar Springs over to Sand Lake or vice versa. So that, that's my thought process on that, I would um, with this event and with the um. The followers that Hero Services has, I would expect probably a lot of individuals coming from the city of Grand Rapids into Cedar Springs. And then I would also expect um, a large turnout as far as motorcyclists as well. Because uh, there is conversations with Harley Davidson and Hudson Bill of getting involved in some form of a um. Providing raffle prizes or sponsorship or assisting us with the event, so.
I think Sand Lake Chamber of Commerce is the one that does their Fourth of July.
Is that, who does?
I believe so, um, my mom volunteered several years ago, and that was who, so just so you know who to touch with.
Heritage days, I think they call it?
Is it? I don't know, just the Fourth of July.
Of July.
Is it Fourth of July?
But the Chamber of Commerce specifically.
Okay, so the chamber would be who we would talk to if you're trying to coordinate.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we don't have more for you on that.
Oh, that's okay, I'm inundated with uh, plenty of referrals, so. We're always still willing to take more, and we uh, you know, we have a couple months to fine tune all the details. And uh, me and Mr. Womack have been working pretty closely with that.
Madam Mayor, could I ask Mr. White?
Please.
Yes, sir. Mr. White, how do you plan to deal with food and drinks?
So, um, with. I've, I've recently been informed that I uh, I believe I, I believe this is accurate, but uh, to. Include the social district, and i- if there's a formal process to incl- to put in a request for that. Um, but we, we as an organization from Hero Services. Would prefer to rely on the businesses already within Cedar Springs to be able to fi- uh, provide concessions.
Okay, so there won't be any additional like.
No, and that was, that was a mistake on my end from the initial form, is, I thought it was just. That was more in reference of, is alcohol gonna be a part of the event? In my head, yes, it would be, coming from the brewery and coming from.
We're looking at, are you setting up a beer tent?
No, no beer tents, no, no food trucks, nothing of that nature. Um, you know, again, if we wound up having a knockout event and stuff like that, that might be something that we would have to consider for twenty twenty-three. If we were allowed to come back.
It's just part of our, our Red Flannel Festival, does do those things, so we have a form to try to.
Sure.
So we can be equipped to. Accommodate.
Right. So, um, no, I'm, I'm not planning on bringing in any outside food or beverage, relying entirely on the businesses in Cedar.
And Busy Moms is a veteran-owned business.
Oh yes, I've been in, I've been in touch with Mr. Wilkes frequently, which I've never called him that, but.
Are quite legendary.
What's that?
The cinnamon rolls are quite legendary, I've not actually eaten one.
I've been sprinkling them like happiness at every facility I go to, just.
I can see that, yeah, my pancreas and I have a deal, and it doesn't include their cinnamon.
I'd like to ask one question, if I could, please.
Please.
Jordan, do you have any idea of what, what participation was gonna be?
Um, initially, no, um, I think that we would be able to get um, a better idea once we have formal approval. Because there's questions being asked, and there's questions being asked by some. I don't, I don't necessarily know how to frame this correctly, but some pretty significant players like Harley Davidson. Um, I, we have contacts within Fox Motorsports. So, um, also the community that has followed Hero Services, I mean, we're a relatively new organization. Been in operation for two years, and we've been making leaps and bounds as far as some of our events. So on our own, we could probably wind up bringing three to four hundred people for an event in this nature. As well with the community of Cedar Springs. Potentially, I mean, this could wound up potentially being a very large event, and I will. Be very blatant and say this is, would be our biggest event to date, so.
Reason, reason I'm asking, do you feel the area that is designated at this point in time is sufficient?
So, as it pertains, because only, the only amount of control that we have is for the register, registration for the Motor Show. Okay, so as it stands right now, with the um, proposed road closures. Uh, me and my event planner are uh, waiting to wind up going out and. Basically measuring the road closure, finding out how many vehicles slash motor, motorcycles we could place in that area. And our registration would be limited to that amount. So we, if, if it can only hold eighty vehicles, we're only going to allow eighty vehicles, we're not gonna be bringing in anymore. Um, you know, that would be maybe something we could factor in later on down the road, but. You know, we, we have our designated area, and we wanna stay in that area.
Any other questions? Good luck. Then, uh, we, do we have a motion? We have a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion.
To approve.
The Patriots Motor Show and Festival Community Event for July second, twenty twenty-two. Subject to final approval of the City Manager.
Do I have a second?
I would second.
Any other discussion?
Looking forward to it, and I hope we have good weather.
Mi- Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Uh. Are we voting or?
We are, we're voting, well, do you have, I would say, do you have an additional discussion?
I, I don't, but I, most heartedly, yes.
Okay.
Have a cinnamon roll.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
Mr. Gross. And Mayor Conley votes yes.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
We're excited.
Me too.
Awesome.
Thanks for encouraging us.
Yeah, thank you.
Figure out final details.
Yep.
Uh. Motion D to appoint Councilperson Lisa Atchison to serve on the Cedar Springs Planning Commission. And just to be clear, I know she isn't here tonight, but it, I have asked her about it, so it's not, I'm not springing it on her.
It feels like you should be appointing Ashley too.
I'll make the motion to appoint Councilperson Lisa Atchison to serve on the Cedar Springs Planning Commission, which she did before.
Right, that's, that's why I'm doing it, and she said she could fit it in.
I would second, and I have questions.
Sure.
So, it seems as though I, I had thought there was a limit on how many councilpersons could be.
One.
Already. Oh, because she's no longer, okay.
Right.
Cause we took Ashley off, cause she's on here and she's new.
Okay.
Now Jerry is still on, but he's no longer on the council, and they are short a person.
That's, I just, for some reason, thought that Ashley was still doing it.
Nope.
Okay, never mind then.
Got it.
Continue.
I'm basi- we're basically putting Lisa on.
We're switching.
And because um, Matt left. And so, we're having a struggle with, um, the Chair is concerned that they're not going to continue to be able to have quorum.
Ah.
So, Lisa will do it for at least a timeframe.
Sure.
And then we can maybe look for someone else.
So, is this, um, should we just be doing that, or both?
She's gonna do both.
Okay.
She's gonna be our one city councilperson. So, which is a thing we can do, and um, Mayor Emeritus, as I call him, is still on the council, or still on the.
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission, although he has times that he has to be absent. And the combination of that, plus the person who has just stepped down, in addition to Ms. Hamel having left. They're starting to struggle to have, to make sure they have quorum. And if they don't have a quorum, they can't vote. So, that's, that's the reason for this. So, any other discussion? Okay, all those, and since this isn't money, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Lisa, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Uh, moving on to item E, the Pocket Park, I don't know what you wanna call this, grant application.
North.
A letter of support.
Letter of support. For the Downtown Pocket Park Project. That is being proposed at seventeen North Main in the downtown area of Cedar Springs. It's a joint project between the City of Cedar Springs and the Downtown Development Authority. And the design work and financial contribution by both parties on land that is owned by the City of Cedar Springs. They need a letter of support to be able to apply for the grant.
Sign Pamela Conley, beautiful writing, by the way.
Yes. Happy to do that.
Yes, um, so I apologize for springing this on you guys at the last second, um, this.
We, we did talk about this.
Yeah, we've spoken about this before, but Ms. Falcon and I had a meeting today with the people who are helping us with the grant. More like the grant givers. Um, and one of the things that they indicated that we were not aware of is that the city should write a letter of support. Even though this is technically a DDA project. Um, because this is going to be on city-owned property. Um, and also, there is a section at the very bottom about uh, admitting of funding. Now, I know this board and I myself have some problems with the current cost of the project. Um, which we will be discussing in detail on the sixteenth Monday, about noon here at City Hall. Um, but this is the absolute maximum that would potentially be asked of the city council now. Uh, the full expectation is that that number is going to de- go down significantly, um, after the meeting on the sixteen. So this is an up to maximum amount, uh, it is absolutely not the city's intention to spend that amount. Uh, and of course, Madam Mayor, you and I are in constant communication, so. Um, we have a deadline of the twenty-third to apply for this grant. You guys will not be meeting again before that time, so I'm asking, uh, for some leeway today. Um, and then obviously, we'll be in touch between now and twenty-third, if we're happy with what the DDA is proposing.
The alternative is, we have to have a special meeting to vote on it, so this is the, and, and poor um, Mike has. Been having meetings with me, stuck in his office, like, I don't know, I think we've had four in the last week and a half, so.
Which I appreciate you coming after school, I know it's.
I was gonna say, I apologize for you having to constantly.
So the current price tag on the Pocket Park, I believe, was five hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars, I believe that's a bit of um, Mr. Stelt's fantasy. Appreciate of him. But I think that number's gonna get reduced in planning. Um, I know that the DDA has about fifty thousand dollars in their fund balance, which is not imaginable five years ago. Uh, cause they were unfunded five years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think I could also maybe be, maybe shave off another twenty from their current year budget, which could put us up to seventy. Um, so I would like to have this number go down significantly.
And this is an important area to develop, it's that, I mean, we can't really do anything else with this space. And at the moment, it's just kind of a blank space. And if we can make this a place where people can sit and eat and have lunch and chat. And we're talking about maybe trying to get bathrooms in there, um. Again, that's one of the bigger expense pieces, it might have to go if we can't come up with the funding. But it's, i- it feels important to me to create a public space in that particular spot. I don't, you are our DDA person, do you have?
I, I think it's a great spot for downtown, and there's grants available. I just don't like to call it a pocket park, could we give it a name like downtown city, Cedar Springs Downtown Park?
I think it needs like a real name.
Yeah.
When we get there, I.
This is a project name.
Yeah, I know. Just, I keep saying it.
So, think about, think about what a name should be. I mean, the DDA should.
Madam Mayor.
We'll talk on Monday.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item E. Uh, the letter of support, the Downtown Pocket Park as written. And as defined by the City Manager.
I have a second.
Mr. Gross, would you be willing to modify your motion to uh, authorize the mayor to sign the letter on behalf of the city?
That is fine, I will accept that.
Me too.
Okay, I have it in front of me with the pen. Any other discussion? Do you need an amount not to exceed?
That one got what?
There is a amount not to exceed in the letter.
Right, but I mean, I didn't know if you needed it in the motion, I'm looking at the clerk. Okay, are we good? So then, Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes, and I have fixed my signature.
One thing I would indicate, cause I had a meeting with a business today, is that they are already planning on hiring musical acts to perform on the stage. That is proposed.
Okay, do you need me to say mayor next to my name, or is Pamela Conley sufficient? Okay, I didn't, it, just, just checking. All right, then moving on to discussion items. A, City Impact proposed purchase or donation of North Park land for a parking lot.
Yep, so.
We talked about this quite a bit at the last meeting, and it's, we can't actually do this, right?
Yeah, so i- it got complicated quick, and, and I apologize to City Impact. Um, I only got to this issue in the last three days. Um, it's complicated, so we have previously received grant money from the EPA.
Right.
As remember through Mr. Zudervine.
Yep.
Greatest last name in the history of last names. Um, who did a significant amount of point source pollution cleanup at that location.
Right.
Trying to have a metal land. Um, so that was all grant paid for, um, and also, um, the DNR, including uh, the Heart of Cedar Springs Park. Morley Park, all the park stuff we've done, they have a concept in their grants called conversion. Uh, if you convert park property to not park property. Regardless of whether the fact that it could be in support of the park, or uh, for example, a museum in a park. Uh, these are all things that could be counted against the city in, uh, both current and future grant applications. So, um, I'm just very, very hesitant to, and I, you know, we all like the City Impact, we like the work they do. Uh, I just, I don't know if I'm willing to put aside the potential of losing hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Um, so. Grants. Grants.
Now, one thing I, I did discuss with them, uh, which was, again, in the last two days, um, is the city has a parking lot there. It's pre-existing, cannot be used against us. Lines are not properly painted in there, that the park is just, it's not as maintained as we'd like it to be. Uh, I did some brief calculations, and I believe that if the lines were repainted, you could have between twenty-five and twenty-seven new parking spaces. But that's a lot of parking. It's close to their establishment. Uh, you could actually walk through the park to get to the rear of their property. Uh, it's not perfect, it's not a wonderful solution, but similar to, um, individuals over on White Creek, we could issue some kind of rightful license, you can use a parking area in exchange for paying the park something. So that's a possible solution, um, just in the last two days, haven't been able to work it out.
Can they put in a walkway?
Uh, I don't know. Something I'd have to contact both the EPA and, uh, DNR about.
Cause it would seem like you could have sidewalks in parks.
Yeah, I think if they were walking trails that's usable for the public, that's probably okay. But I did discuss that very issue with the DNR regarding Morley Park, because of our intention of potentially withdraw the driveway out of there and put a walking path.
Walking path in.
Um, and if I recall correctly, cause this is about two months ago, uh, they said, yeah, you just have to ask permission first. So, so it's possible. So, an ongoing issue. At the time, you know, right.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, as we're continuing to try to process this with the folks from City Impact, that might be, if it's a little bit further away, and there has to be a space to walk, if there could be a.
Especially in the winter or something.
Right, a path that could be easily shoveled or plowed.
Yeah, yep, so I'll definitely keep working with them in such a way that it doesn't impact our grant dollars.
Sure. Absolutely, any other discussion or questions about that? Yeah, I went over and walked around it and.
North, North Park or?
The, the area behind City Impact and I guess North Park, part of North Park. I have some ideas about North Park I wanna talk to you about at some point.
It was squishy before it got dug out, I don't know how it's gonna support a walking path, but.
Well, it might have to be built off, like it might have to have some fill brown in.
Yeah.
The west side of the park is actually high ground.
Yeah.
But you're right, I remember the first couple of weeks I was here, I walked through the park on a ninety-five degree day.
You didn't know, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
You didn't know. That's, there goes my shoes.
It was, was a ballpark.
Yeah, stand out there, water up to your knees. There is a sidewalk that they can walk up to the.
There is, there is a main street sidewalk.
Yeah, right.
You're also working with another business that we're hoping to bring into town, um, which might be asked by the Planning Commission to extend a sidewalk all the way, um, kind of back to that location.
Yeah.
As part of their site plan. So there could be extended sidewalk there.
And I know overall, I think we've all felt like North Park is underutilized. And we've not been able to figure out how to make it, um, maintain it as a park, but make it accessible and useful for the community. And I have just roll around in your brains, but I have thought about the idea of making a, um, Michigan natives' natural garden, botanic garden with like a trail through it with Michigan native plants and trees that could be labeled and something sort of like what we have at, um.
In front of the CS manufacturing.
Well, the nature, um, why can't I say it right now? Anyway, North Kent Nature, uh, Nature Preserve.
Howard Christian.
Howard Christensen, something sort of like that is what I've thought about without the necessarily buildings and, but if we put in, you know, native species that we know will grow here and then have a walking loop trail through it. That might be a, um, you know, there's not a lot to tear up a red bud tree. But it could be quite nice and attractive and good for the land. And if it has a nice trail, it could be a loop that goes off of the North Country Trail or something to that effect. But I don't know, I don't have any, I just was, you know, walking around trying to think about what could we do there. So roll it around in your brains as we try to think about how to make that a place that our community can utilize. Any other comments on that? Thoughts, questions? Yes.
Something related to that park.
Sure.
Off of Oak Street, there is a path that goes down through, and there is a makeshift bridge. Goes over the creek. There are no handrails, there's nothing along in there. Uh, the elevation of it and so forth, I've always felt that it could be a risk and hazardous, and a potential lawsuit to the city. It doesn't necessarily fit into this, but if you're going to have more foot traffic possibly, uh, that would pass over that, especially while the bridge is torn out, uh, for people that come off from the apartment complexes and head down to the Speedway or Save-A-Lot or, not Save-A-Lot, whatever the.
Dollar General.
Dollar General, right. I don't know if it's something that the Department of Public Works could come up with something. Uh, it's just, I'd like to see some consideration as to making it a little safer.
Okay.
That's just because this is a discussion area.
Sure. Okay, any other thoughts? Then moving on to the discussion regarding the Downtown Development Authority's proposed downtown Pocket Park. Not Pocket Park, with a name to be announced, uh, to be determined. Park at seventeen North Main Street, engineer's estimate of probable costs. Any discussions about this?
I can see where we can reduce a lot of costs, but, uh, you know, until we get more discussions going. Well, from there, it's, it's a fantastic spot, and there's some great ideas there, but they're kinda out of line.
I, I am curious about the cost of a year-round bathroom.
So, uh, just in brief discussion with the engineer, uh, he indicated that a mini boiler.
Boiler.
Would not be a significant cost. Question though, I would have is, we're also planning a bathroom at the Harrier Springs, which I think that one's gonna be a two or three stall bathroom. Do we want them both to be heated?
Probably.
It's a question for you guys.
Would be the person I have, would the, would the DDA pay for maintenance of that bathroom and the heat and the cleaning?
Great question. Um, you know, the city takes on a lot of extra costs.
Yes.
Occasionally, especially if it's something that specifically benefits the downtown, I think it's appropriate that they.
Yes.
Problem is, it could become difficult, because as you know, the DPDW takes care of the bathrooms. And, you know, they may have to, uh, take their time and build it to one way or the other, and it's not just heating it, it's also cleaning it and bathroom supplies and all sorts of stuff.
Shovel in the snow and.
Yeah.
Okay. But I do think it's helpful if you're wanting to get people to use the downtown, especially coming off the trail. So I don't, I mean, again, I'm, I'm rather agnostic on it, I don't own a business, I, I can get to my bathroom from the trail without any difficulty, so I'm, I'm open to.
Well, you'll hear that discussion at the DDA.
I'm sure I will, I'm just saying, this is my, I am also though very understanding that if we want people to come into the community for things like a concert, for things like something at the brewery, for something at the Redbird, for a car show, for a, that, um, people need to use potties. So I, I get it. So I, as a person who keeps Maine, uh, City Hall open during Red Flannel, so people can come in and use the bathroom.
Yes.
So, um, I, I understand, I also understand that it's, it's, you know, poor Bill and his staff have to deal with the craziness that happens. So I get that too. So any other thoughts on this? Then moving on to communications, community event calendar. I have been approached by several, um, businesses and organizations about having community events. And I have been funneling them towards our poor city manager, go in and talk to Mike, ask for a community event application, so.
I haven't heard from that many.
Um.
Just wondering if there's a disconnect.
I don't know, the one is.
Maybe there's another by tomorrow.
The one I think we talked about, that I said I wasn't sure that it was legal, like they would have to talk to state law.
That requires some modification of law, I think.
I was like, if this law says you can, um, and then I had someone actually not here who was talking about a bicycle event when I was at work.
You have the Cedar Blitz, which is occurring, hopefully it's gonna be a huge event. Um, I know Ms. Race has volunteered to be on that, uh, volunteer team. I'm planning to if I get around to doing it. But also, um, the DDA just announced the summer concert series.
Mm-hmm.
So that information, I believe was emailed to you, it's on the city's Facebook page, it's on the DDA's page. I was hoping we'd be able to announce the comedy at the Kent movie series at the same time, but I need DDA approval, probably on Monday to announce that. So we're creating city events. Uh, as you guys know from last year, we also try to have children's events, uh, for and during the concerts in the park, uh, including the Busy Moms Bakery Cake Walk. City Impact comes down, plays yard games, and the, I believe, the Enslie team did a bicycle giveaway, all sorts of fun stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Red Flannel's coming up soon, we're having meetings on that and.
Well, don't say soon, because Red Flannel is fall, and it means we skipped right over summer.
We start planning in what, March?
And as a person who has to get three hundred and something, twenty-something people pinned into gowns and across the stage at fifth third ballpark next week, I'm.
Have things to do.
I am not ready for summer to be over. So any other communication, community event, or community event calendar, things on communication?
Uh, the DDA has approved of a mural modification at seventy-one North Main Street. Saw pictures in your thing. I think they were heartened by the idea of, uh, wings that you can paint on a wall that people can go up and take their pictures with. Um, and they specifically seem to be adding one for dogs.
I will make sure that Baxter and Affey.
I actually saw the one, the existing one on TV today.
Yeah.
It would be really cool if they were Red Hawk wings. They are Red Hawk wings. Like, I, I asked if they would put Red Hawk on it, but I will see. That's still debatable.
There will be a hashtag.
Well, that could be Red Hawk on it.
You're gonna have to fight with some DD numbers.
Uh, yeah. Been there, done that.
Uh, and then, Madam Mayor, you know about this, I'm not sure if council's aware of it, but WZZM.
Yes.
Is doing a spotlight piece on the city of Cedar Springs, so.
Yes.
They see them about or asking questions or something.
That's what that mural was on TV for.
Yeah.
Already done?
Well, missed it.
I was gonna say, I just sent them an email response, so.
Maybe they're just doing, uh, preparatory work.
Uh, then calendar, twenty-twenty-two, where are our meetings and other things? Anything? And then Cedar Springs Cannabis Company State License Notification Complete Application.
I know it feels like forever ago, but we do still have some marijuana businesses getting ready to open. The Lake Life Farms is ready to open in the same strip mall as the Subway Restaurant. You guys probably know the CSC Cannabis.
Yeah.
And South Main Street, which is the old frame shop. I know that.
Mister Maybe's.
Mister Maybe's shop. I know Cloud Cannabis, um, they plan an opening, uh, this would be the old, I think, rental place on North Main Street.
They've been trying to get open for a long time.
Yeah, and I don't understand what the delay is, but they plan to be open by June, they said.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I think the, um, micro business behind the Wesco is, uh, laid indefinitely at this point. Um, but, you know, I continue to work with these businesses, cause it is extremely financially beneficial to the city.
In more ways than one.
Plus it's healthcare for those who need it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's a, and they've really, the, um, the new one that just opened, Mister Maybe's facility, um, they came to the chamber meeting and they've been, they did a trash cleanup and they've been very, they joined the chamber and are doing a very, um, nice job, I think, of trying to integrate into the community as a business, so.
Though it's not part of this communication, uh, if you haven't seen the alleyway next to the room shop.
Yes.
These do, they did an excellent job.
Park looks, uh, uh, maybe park isn't the right word, the.
Gussied-up alleyway.
Gussied-up alleyway.
That's for sure.
It does, it looks very nice, they've, they've done some really nice work there. And anything else then on that with the applications for the state license? Lake Life Farms Retail State License Notification Complete Application. Uh, Van Cannabis State License Notification Determination Worship Service at the Amphitheater Community Event, July twenty-fourth, thirty-first, August seventh, fourteenth, from five to eight PM.
Any? What is Van Camp Cannabis, where's, which one is that?
Cannabis is the legal name of the maybe.
Oh.
Autocare business.
Yeah.
Alright, got it.
They, he, like, he has a group that came in and is running it? I'm not sure exactly. If you go in there, you will not see Mister Maybe.
No.
He's not the, like.
Ironically, I've seen him every time I was there.
Okay.
Oh, oh.
Interesting, cause I've been in there twice and I've not, and the people that introduced, at post the chamber meeting, said, you know, we are the people who are hired to run this, so, which is fine, I mean.
And they're picking up the trash in the alley.
Right.
Which is wonderful.
Yeah, no, I was quite impressed.
Did my job.
Rowan's City Council member and trash cleanup person.
Yes.
Uh, and then the DDA mural modification at seventy-one North Main, which we've already talked about. Anything else on communication? Anybody have anything? Then moving on to department reports, Mister Manager.
Yeah, uh, I, despite what some people might think, I actually am extremely busy. I was on the phone pretty much all day today, putting out fires, solving things, getting grant money.
I know how many meetings you have with me.
Yeah. So I have been working on the multifamily issue along with the hundred other issues I work on each month. Again, I do understand their, their frustrations. I, I don't appreciate when they get up and tell half-truths, uh, cause obviously the public doesn't know the truth, but anyways, trying to resolve that issue. Yeah, you know, we've been running a, a good ship here, it's hard to get people on board. Uh, we did hold some interviews recently for a deputy position. We'll have somebody on board here shortly. Uh, I think we're gonna advertise for a full-time DPDW position, uh, here shortly as well. Um, and I've been waiting to resolve some of these bigger issues before I get into the assistant manager thing. But yeah, looking forward to a fun summer, uh, we got lots of activities in the downtown, uh, summer concert series looks very nice. I'll be in here tomorrow working on issues. I might go on vacation at some point, which by the way, there are flights to Australia out of Detroit for eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars if you're interested.
You don't get to leave.
Even when he does leave, he's still.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I remember some Zoom meetings from when he was on vacation.
Like, would you?
And then I've got some bad news for you about August first.
Well, you get to have vacation, but you're only on loan to those other places.
That's not the issue, the issue is my contract expires on August first.
Oh, wow.
So, uh, may have to talk about that here shortly.
Indeed.
Yes. Uh, so other than that, you know, I'm happy to be here and I have people who'd like to talk to you, I'm sure.
Okay, Department of Public Works, Mister LaRose, do you have anything?
Oh, Sam.
I don't know if he's here.
Again, they've been absolutely busted for a long time.
They were out picking up brush and scooping and. They were out picking up brush and scooping and this week.
Mr. LaRose, in addition to being the director, he's also a worker. With the bridge project and the fiber optic, and, uh, I think we had two leaking valve boxes.
I was gonna say, there's, yeah, there's a thing that.
Very busy, and I thought he was gonna be here, but.
It's good, it's good. So anything specific that you, Mr. Manager, regarding DPW that we, the leaking valve boxes?
No, um, so one of the things that we're planning on doing here is, you know, we send out a tax bill, uh, in early July. Um, I'm gonna ask each of my, uh, department heads to put together a paragraph or two about their department and what they need and what they expect and whatever else. Uh, because I, I do think to a certain extent, there is a lack of communication between City Hall and the residents. You know, we, we do our best with free social media. It costs several hundred dollars every time we send a mailer out. Frankly, to a certain extent, people who rent are not as involved in their community as people who own. This is a high-rent city. I mean, that is a high number of renters. So we're hoping to, with the tax bill, send out a, you know, community letter, which should also also make available front desk, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, kind of explaining kind of all that we do. I could talk for days.
Okay. Anything else? Police Department, I don't know if we have Sergeant Probst.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we're in the final preparation stages for that Cedar Blitz gravel race. Um, which is May twenty-first, next Saturday. Um, this event takes a lot of manpower from law enforcement, uh, and with that, we've had to reach out to assist us. Reach out to Rockford PD and Sparta PD, both will be providing a few, a couple officers to assist us with some intersection controls throughout the county, so we appreciate that. And then next week we'll be getting with DPW to get our barricade and stuff set out, so we'll be prepared for that, hoping it'll be a great event. And also reference the July event, um, looking forward to that. We have reached out to them and let them know that we are requesting, uh, one deputy to be there for the entire event due to the lane closures and then not knowing how big the event will be. I think that it's a great year for that with the bridge being closed, so looking forward to that.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Right. Then Fire Department, is Marty available or no?
Yep, CS Fire's up there.
Marty, you're gonna have to unmute yourself if you'd like to speak with us. Wake up, Marty.
How about now, can you hear me?
We can.
I am struggling here a little bit. I apologize to the council, um, allergies, sinuses and stuff have been giving me fits for a couple days with this weather. Um, the only other thing I got, I fat fingered, uh, my monthly summary and the Feeding America Distribution. I wrote down, it's Monday, April sixteenth, that should be May sixteenth, this coming Monday. Um, the, the bigger the numbers we get in turnout, the longer this is gonna last. Uh, there was some discussion during the winter months that we didn't get bigger turnout, this thing may end, uh, go up in a cloud of dust. So I would recommend to anybody that, uh, with today's economy and, uh, needs a little help, please show up and, and get our numbers up and we will continue the program as long as we can, I guess. And we're, I say we, I'm just, we're here, we're making space available, and we provide some assistance for the volunteers, and it's, it's been a very, very worthwhile event, in my, uh, my opinion, and it's, uh, you have to be here to see what goes on, I guess.
So just to clarify, anybody that could use food assistance, you don't have to prove anything or show any income or have any specific letter, you can just show up and get a bag of food.
That is correct. Um, you have to register and that's what they base the distribution on, the more of the people, the more of the poundage. And, uh, the more people can get a little bit of help, you know, I'm, I'm one of them.
Do they register?
They have to register that they, yes. They, they start lining up, the event starts at four-thirty, actually, we're here at four, but they start lining up at two-thirty, three o'clock. So, it's, uh, it's quite the event and it's, it's it's well worth it. I'll leave it at that.
So if people could use food assistance, come to the Cedar Springs Fire Station on Monday, May sixteenth.
This Monday, this upcoming Monday, yes.
This upcoming Monday at, you, they should be there at four?
Yes, four o'clock.
At four o'clock, and you can sign up and you will receive a bag of food.
I think you need to register in advance, if I understood correctly.
Where do you register in advance?
Yeah, yeah, your name and information is, uh, recorded on a clipboard and no proof of income or anything, it's just.
They register when they're there, is my understanding.
Okay, yeah. How many folks have been showing up, Marty?
You know, you put me on the spot, Mrs. Powell, but I, I seem to think there was around sixty or seventy um, boxes made up last month. I, I might be way off base for that, but it seems to me it was in that sixty to seventy boxes of, uh, and, and we, from what I understand, I work with, uh, I believe her name is Ashley Phillips from wherever your school or wherever she's from, uh, we never know quite what we're gonna get. Sometimes you might get fruit and, and milk and stuff, next night you're gonna get apples and cereal, and so we never know quite what the menu is gonna be, but, um, you'll go home with, with, uh, pretty generous amount of food.
Do they hand all those boxes out, do you think, or is there?
If, if they're, uh, not last month, but the month before, they run out of food. Last month, what, what a little bit was left over went to oh, that, that, we just talked about it tonight, the, uh.
City Impact?
City Impact, uh, they have their food, food distribution day on Thursdays, I believe. So if there is anything left over, it goes to the, uh, City Impact Building.
Let's folks get a tour of our beautiful new fire station.
Well, they usually don't get out of their car, they drive too, and I don't know, I don't know about thirty mile an hour, how much you can in. No, it, uh, it's, it's a worthwhile event and I'd like to see it continue.
All right, so you can show up on Monday at four o'clock and sign the clipboard and you can get a bag of food.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, sounds wonderful. Thank you for your support of that, Marty.
You're very welcome and I'm glad we have the opportunity to do this.
I am too. Anything else for us?
I don't have anything unless the council has anything. Um, we've been busy. Uh, we're getting equipment service done as time and schedules permit. I just had a phone call, uh, today that they're gonna come in first of June and do our hose testing for us. We're plugging, plugging along. Enjoying a lot of things that we do and just doing what we love to do.
Sounds good.
Not me texting them to shut up, so. Thank you, Marty.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Chief. All right, moving on, City Clerk. How was that first special election? I, I really appreciate the work that you put in for that special election. I know that one of the people, at least at some point, was claiming he thought there was some sort of problem. Has there been any follow-up with that in any capacity of actually, like, requesting an audit or? And the election's been certified and so wonderful, and thank you for all the work you put in for that. I know special election, it's kind of thrown a extra just, okay, let's all just make everybody go vote. That's not surprising at all. So wonderful, anything else? All right, moving on to Finance Director. I think we looked at the budget cash summary, any any questions? I know she isn't here, but.
So the city does have a policy, a strong policy of making sure that all, uh, department heads have the opportunity to join boards and conferences and everything else outside of the city, uh, because I find incredible value in that. Every time I go to another community, I see how they have their pocket parks done, um, and, and other stuff. I can bring that back to our community.
Right.
So that's kind of what she's doing right now.
Sure, and I'm glad she's doing it. And we are very supportive of training and attending conferences and we are, I know our clerk has done a tremendous amount of that to get additional certifications and training. I know our manager does that. So, absolutely, that's, I, wonderful. Code Enforcement.
Um, our code enforcement officer has been so good for us that she is now also working part-time in Sparta. And she is, um, helping them along with their issues.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Building inspection, right? We keep putting that on there and we never have anything.
For years.
Right?
We will work on the Bible.
We need to go hunt down stock. Uh, Boarding Commission Minutes, the NKCE Minutes, do we need to have any kind of a conversation about this or not right now?
So, um, you know, at the beginning of this whole process, and Madam Mayor, you and I talked about this considerable amount. Uh, the city has the money to budget for that and we did.
Right.
The anticipation was that.
We were told by several other municipalities that they were gonna be pulling out.
Yes, and then some changed their minds, so, uh, we're happy to support the NKCE, we've got the budget for it, so I don't need anything from council. Uh, it's our intention to support them at this point.
So any other questions on that?
Glad they're going. Keep going, you know, see, hopefully it'll be more successful than.
Sure.
COVID just beat them up so bad that.
And we're, we, we're still, are we still having the library take on the daddy, daughter dance?
Not at this point.
Okay.
So the library was considered an option if the NKCE were to close.
Okay.
Um, if the NKCE is gonna continue, they should be able to do it.
Okay.
But, you know, and again, Madam Mayor, you, you and I talked about this, but, you know, we're shorthanded on the planning commission until tonight, we're shorthanded on the ZBA, we're shorthanded on the we're gonna be shorthanded for our person on the NKCE.
Yeah.
We need volunteers. Or, and volunteer board members.
So, good enough? Because I was gonna say, I would just be, and I don't wanna, like, volunteer a librarian, but if the NKCE feels like that's not a thing they can do because, because there are some municipalities that pulled out?
Yes, uh, Cortland pulled out. Yeah, we were under the impression that Algo was also going to pull out.
But they didn't.
But they ended up not. Um, Solon is still in and the city is still in.
Okay. So if, if it becomes a thing of, like, us help, I mean, continuing to stay in but taking an event to take it off their plate because they don't think they can do it?
That's a huge moneymaker for them.
Is it? Okay. I didn't know if there was a difficulty of, like, having them.
Why the library was going to be willing to do it if it was not done by the.
I see. I didn't know if they were having difficulty with a place or a, I don't know, like, if the school pulled out or.
The city will obviously support and work with them.
That was sort of my, what I was trying to say. We would additionally support specific events in addition to the money that we're providing, if it helps to keep the vote. All right, then I think that takes us to council comments, unless anyone else has any other, you are our Board and Commission Person, anything else you want to tell us about?
I'm waiting for a CBDT meeting to come about.
Did they have one at, like?
They had a board meeting.
Seven o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, that's the board, so I don't know what the general membership is, if Sue has a.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Do you have enough people? Okay. Because I have a couple people I could, that I've talked to that I could. Okay.
Yeah, the usual team.
I got a couple, Carrie said. And she's, like, we, everybody loves her. She would be a wonderful addition.
And the other thing is, I'm hoping we can get the multifamily homes settled. I think we have an option and we ready to discuss it, we just gotta deal with the details with the attorney's letter and see how that fits in with our, our attorney deals with it and hopefully we can you know, but it takes time, a lot of time. We have a meeting once a month, it seems like forever, but.
Um, I attended, along with the manager, the, a meeting of the chamber. And they, I think, are working, they've, they've had some struggles um, of recent years, and I felt like there were some newer members who were really looking to kind of, I don't know, reinvigorate or activate, um, particularly the new marijuana facility to try to come up with some chamber events and to, so I thought that was quite exciting. I don't know that we actually have minutes, but there were quite a few people there. I thought that was a, a nice sign. And I don't know, anybody else have any other boards or commissions? All right, then council comments. Counselor Pell?
I already said what I had to say.
Okay. Counselor Gross?
I want to clarify something that I thought might have went a little wrong last week or last month. I am here to represent all of the citizens of Cedar Springs, all of the taxpayers of the city of Cedar Springs, whether they voted for me or not, okay? I'm looking out for the best interest of everybody. If it's a rental property, it's a rental property, whether that person lives in or outside of the city. Doesn't matter to me, they're paying taxes and they expect, I expect to represent them as well as anything else, so. I, I know it became part of the dialogue at the end of the meeting last month and, uh, uh, I'd already spoken my piece and, uh, didn't want to jump back in on it, but, uh, uh, that's the way I feel. Uh, if I depended on only those that voted for me uh, and those are the only ones I'm gonna support, there might be a minority of the community, okay? And I don't look at it as that, I'm here to support everybody. Uh, I want to thank all the department heads and everything they do. I want to thank Michael for everything that you do and I understand your schedule is what it is, and I know we have talked many, many times about needing to get you some assistance and I still believe that. I believe that this, this deal with the rentals does need to be taken care of and I think there is a solution there. It's just, you know, get it documented and get it taken care of. And, uh, I, I hate the idea that anybody feels on either side that it has to be litigation to take care of it. So I'm hoping we can take care of this without that. Again, I appreciate everything the departments do, uh, and what they do, and, uh, and then it means they do it, but, uh, I guess that's it for me, okay?
Ms. Race?
Just thank you for all the, uh, department heads and all that they do. There's a lot of weight.
There's a lot of weight that, uh, is going on in the city right now. We have a lot of great things coming our way. Positive things, a lot of grants that, I mean, there's just a process to everything and, and meetings, we do one, two, three readings before we approve anything, so it just takes time, it just takes time. We want a good outcome for everyone, so. Thank you, Mike, for all that you do. We need like five more people. We'll get you the help.
Ms. Nixon?
So I am going to be on the same vein as everyone else, I think. So, um, uh, in meeting Mike six years ago, that was twenty-six hours of interviews, fifteen thousand dollars to, um, um, how to, uh, put that search out. It was a couple days of migraines. It was sorting through many, many papers to find a co, a, a person that we felt was competent and would fit our community and we did. He now has the very unpopular job of enforcing the law as it is written to the best of his understanding and even I recently got a code enforcement letter saying you cannot do what you did, you need to fix it, and so do I love those letters? No, but I'm gonna fix it. This, this, uh, situation with the rentals started out, um, talking to a very sympathetic board who acknowledged the unintended consequences of a law. And so in response to that, was trying to think through a very carefully worded and appropriate remedy so that we did not penalize anyone or disincentivize them from the upkeep of their property. It is unfortunate that to a sympathetic board they decided to introduce legal counsel, um, which is their right to do and I support their right to do it.
Yeah.
But now because there is legal counsel involved, an already slow and arduous process now has to be run through our legal counsel because I am responsible to the taxpayers of Cedar Springs to make sure that we do not get sued. So I sympathize that there is undoubtedly lost income or inconvenience or whatever else, but we are seeking to avoid further unintended consequences and now have to slow down further to avoid unintended consequences. So Mr. Womack has my personal full support. I fully believe that he has a high level of integrity, that he is an extremely intelligent attorney. I think the city of Cedar Springs is lucky to have him and I hope he will consent to stay for another three years. But if he chooses to leave, I would give him a shining reference to wherever he wished to go. The city manager has my full support. And to anyone who is upset with policies or laws, that is their problem. And we can change those policies and laws. But that's a separate discussion than a personal attack on the city manager. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, with that, I'm going to piggyback off this also and just to clarify, when I say that I do not represent people that do not live here, I don't. And it's not about whether they did vote for me. It's about whether or not they are in a position where I am supposed to be their voice. And if you live here, if you are a citizen, if you are a resident, it is my job to be your voice. And part of that means that I make sure that you have a safe place to live. And that's what these ordinances are about. And coming and yelling at me and demanding that because you pay taxes, that you get to have personal meetings with me and the manager to determine how this works is just quite frankly not persuasive. And I am always going to come down on the side of it needs to be safe and that our zoning ordinances and our, our inspections and our processes are there for a reason. They're not there to make people's lives difficult, they are there to make things safe. And we've had some serious issues that are not safe. We've had issues that also jeopardize our public safety people that have to go deal with them. When my fire department have to go outside and outside entrance and go upstairs to go into a external bedroom that has bunk beds stacked in it. I'm, I'm just, it's not happening. So if we have to go through a clunky process to make sure that that happens so that our citizens are safe, I'm okay with that. So that's where I'm at. And with that, we're adjourned.